Right, if you would all rise and join me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
All right, on our agenda, the next item is the public comment regarding agenda items. We have two opportunities for public to speak. The first is for anything that's on the agenda tonight. And the second one will be towards the end of our meeting, which will be for any and all topics. Is there anyone from the public that would wish to address us about agenda items?
Yes.
All right, please come to the podium, state your name and your case.
I am Joe Heim, resident of Beach Park and member of VFW Post 4737. Approximately a year ago, in conjunction with Gold Star Mother, Kathy Pennage, and my VFW volunteer to fund the memorial to our native son, John Pennage. All the paperwork and everything has been submitted. Unfortunately, we missed the 16 October date of John Pennage's death in Afghanistan. Nevertheless, we're here now, speaking at a family gathering prior to the 16th on the weekend. The Pennage family in memory of John, I had time to talk to Kathy. We discussed the memorial, I brought it there and we discussed it. And in discussion with the village, we decided to make it not just John Pennage, to make it expandable. There are now 12 other locations on the memorial to honor the fallen. Knowing the probability of 12, you know, members of the military dying in foreign fields, Kathy agreed to expand it to any first spawner that lives in Beach Park, be it sheriff or fireman. She's also going to add local Gold Star Mothers. Everything is ready to go. Like I said, this paperwork's submitted and I'm waiting for the termination of the board.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wish to address the board about agenda items? All right, hearing none, we shall move on then. We have our consent agenda tonight, which includes the following. Approval of the village board regular meeting minutes of October 10th. Bills presented for payment, the amount of $192,066.90. The September finance report and the September community development report. Is there anything that the board would have us to consider separately? All right, hearing none, accept a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second by trustee Gust and trustee Miller. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Sittick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under mayor's report tonight, just one bit of good news, I guess I'd say. Our resident cub reporter, Bob Haynes, has been posting videos on the progress at the Bull Creek, Sheridan Road crossing there. Appears that they found a way to get the rest of the fill put in and they are putting road base down now and utilities are going in. So, all accounts say that they're still on schedule to have traffic running on the road by the 22nd. Let's keep everything positive and happy and hope and maybe we can get the the traffic out of the neighborhood and back onto the highway.
It would be awesome.
More to come. We won't have a board meeting between now and then, so we'll have to pay attention to what's going on because we'll have Thanksgiving right about that time. Typically, you don't have the second meeting in... Oh no, we'll have, excuse me, we'll have one meeting. I was thinking about the completion, yes. All right, next up, we've got reports from trustees. First up, trustee Jensen.
Thank you, mayor. Apart from the date for our next finance training meeting, I have nothing to report. That meeting will be held November 19th upstairs.
All right.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Parks and Recreation, trustee Gust.
No report tonight, your honor.
Thank you. Building, Planning and Zoning Committee, trustee Wells.
No report, your honor.
All righty. Public Relations Intergovernmental Committee, trustee Miller.
Well, this is kind of public relations, just remind everybody that Sunday's trick or treat. So, get your costumes and your candy all ready. 2 to 5 p.m. Sunday afternoon, no football during trick or treat. Okay, that's all I have.
We do have one other, the sheriff's department has the drug takeback Saturday, correct? What, do we know the time of that?
10 to 2, roughly.
10 to 2, okay. All right, very good. All right, Public Safety Committee, trustee Sittick.
Oh, I just have one quick item. Third of November, time to change clocks and batteries in the smoke detectors. I just like to remind everyone to do that. You know, it's one of those things I forget to do. I don't have anything else. Does the sheriff's department have anything tonight? Nothing? Everything is well out there?
Yeah.
Wonderful, thank you. That's all I have, thanks.
All right, thank you. Next up, Public Works, trustee Miller.
Okay, a couple of things tonight. First one is a resolution for the board's consideration. And this is next year's 2025 MFT Motor Fuel Pack Street Maintenance Project. It's been expanded slightly to address additional roads in order to keep the mobilization costs down and increase the lengths of streets to be improved. We have in our packet a copy of the agreement and a list of all the streets that are being projected to be done. But this is an agreement to perform the work by the engineering firm HMG in the amount not to exceed $79,850. This is in conjunction with our village priorities, which is continuing priority every year to do more aggressive pavement repair and replacement. The impact to our budget is $79,850 and this money is coming out of our capital improvement fund. So with that, I would make a motion to approve the resolution and accept the proposal from HMG engineers for design and bidding services for the 2025 MFT Street Maintenance Project, amount not to exceed $79,850.
I will second it.
We have a motion by trustee Miller, second by trustee Gust. Discussion?
And this was approved unanimously by the Public Works Committee, by the way, in the October meeting.
Okay. All right, hearing no discussion, let the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Sittick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Second item for the board's consideration is also a resolution. And this has to do with sidewalk replacement. The village staff requested proposals from contractors for this project and received back only one proposal, I'm told. And this was from a company called Whitney Moran. And they're going to perform the necessary maintenance of the sidewalks throughout the Cambridge subdivision. And this is a company we've worked with before, is that right, Pat?
That is correct.
Yes, okay. So this is in alignment with our village priority of long-term maintenance. The impact to our budget is $16,800 and this money is coming out of our general fund. So, the Public Works Committee also recommended this unanimously at their meeting last week. Written, so I would make a motion to recommend approval of the resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Whitney Moran Company for the 2024 Sidewalk Replacement Program in an amount of $16,800.
I will second it.
We have a motion by trustee Miller, second by trustee Gust. Discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Sittick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and lastly, this is a final payment to a contractor. This is the fifth and final pay application request for the project of the, excuse me, the Water Main Interconnect. The work involved in this project contains final remaining quantities and any punch list items, including the time and material cost. Work was completed by the contractor and reviewed and approved. Pay request was discussed at our Public Works Committee meeting in October, recommended unanimously for approval. This is in keeping in line with our village priority of improving village infrastructure and part of the long-term water system master plan. Impact to the village budget is $375,501.53 and this money is coming out of the Water and Sewer Capital Fund. So with that, I would offer a motion to recommend authorizations to pay application number five to Campanella and Sons Incorporated for the Wadsworth Road Water Main Interconnect Project in the amount of $375,501.53. And may I just add, this was, this project was years in coming.
Yes.
Years and years and years, seriously, I mean, you know, we've been more than 10 probably, right?
Yep.
So we are just delighted that this is completed and it's a safety project for the water.
I will second it.
All right, motion by trustee Miller, second by trustee Gust. Discussion? I might point out that the change order number one that had been approved was a $51,000 in change deduct, which it's always nice to see a project come in under estimate. All right, and also that this was largely funded, not completely, but largely funded by an ARPA grant. So that was something that made this project possible for us as well.
A very healthy ARPA grant.
Yes. All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Sittick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
All right.
That concludes Public Works.
Thank you very much. There is no report from the TIF Committee as it has not met. Move on to staff reports. First up is the aforementioned VFW memorial plaque at Founders Park. Mark, did you want to introduce the...
Sure. As the mayor should introduce the licensing agreement with the VFW for the plaque memorial mounting over there that Mr. Heim brought for Founders Park in the file, you'll see pictures of the location. Black hole circle there and, you know, it's up there, it's through the Public Works and everything else. And they completed the licensing agreement.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Gus.
Second.
Second by trustee Miller. Discussion?
I guess I'll say something. I'd like to commend Mr. Heim and the VFW for this. I think it's very appropriate that we recognize not only the deceased members of our military, but those who have served and returned and some of them not whole. So we, I thank you for that.
Definitely.
And sadly, it's a good thought to make room for more, but it has to be done.
All right, any other discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Sittick.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and next?
The next item, a mayor's ordinance that would allow one additional, what is it, a class J license to liquor code. Class J is essentially for restaurant. The village received an application for that liquor license and has also filed some of the paperwork that's included in there on the site plan and layout for the building at 38835 North Sheridan Road, you know, the southeast corner there of Sheridan and Oak Forest. The applicant intends to do a restaurant in there. Correct me if I'm wrong, an Indian fusion restaurant is my understanding, so.
That is correct.
But...
Okay. This is the old Nationwide Electronics Building that's been sitting vacant for ever? 25 years, I don't know. And it's exciting, we had a, we had a previous developer that had intended to put a small grocery store in there and that never materialized. So it's exciting to have someone willing to invest in not only the location, but also in our village. Do we have a motion to approve this ordinance? Let me, let me read the motion. An ordinance approving, approving ordinance amending Chapter 516, Title V of the Village of Beach Park Code to modify the number of available liquor licenses. And that's a motion by trustee Miller. We have a second.
I'll second it.
We have a second by trustee Gust. Discussion?
I have a couple of questions, mayor.
Sure.
One, I was looking at, looking at these documents you provided, the seating for this, how many, how many patrons will this accommodate? Do you, do you have any idea?
I don't recall the exact number, but I believe it's a three to one ratio that's required for seats to parking. And if I remember correctly, it was somewhere around 12 parking spaces.
So, there's actually, it indicates on the drawing, 600 square feet of dining seating for 24.
I missed that, okay.
Yeah.
And the second question is, as we all know, we were blindsided once upon a time by a facility that had a poor license and suddenly was a gambling facility. I'm wondering if, what, I'm not, I'm not against it, I supported it when we first allowed it, but I'm curious as to what provisions are made to either preclude or allow that activity at this location.
My understanding is that this applicant is intending on applying for video gaming. In the drawing, or in the renderings, there is actually a separate room off of the dining room.
Which is required, right.
Yeah, so it would just be a doorway into another space that 360 square feet or something like that, I think it says on the drawing. So yes, that, that is the intention, I guess, of the...
Not surprising, considering the size of it, I would, I'm not surprised.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other discussion?
These drawings, are these just renderings?
Yes. These were done by his architect, as I understand it.
Okay.
Very realistic.
But this is the intended?
Yes.
Interior?
Yep.
It's not an existing interior somewhere else?
No.
Okay.
What does the inside of that building currently look like?
It's, it's completely, I, it's not even a vanilla box or a white box, whatever you want to call it. It's just open framing, et cetera. So there, this will be a complete build out.
That building is structurally sound?
Yeah. Yeah, that will be part of our inspection process. But there have been a lot of maintaining, maintenance repairs made on that building over the years at our requirements, but, yeah.
How many parking spots?
How many parking spots?
Well, I think it, I think it was 12, am I right in saying that?
Yes.
In front of me right now.
12.
Yeah. Yeah, it's 12. So they'll be doing some improvements. Yeah, they'll be doing improvements as well to the parking lot area, some additional landscaping and the like as part of this.
Yeah, because I remember there were a previous project and there was issues with the ingress and egress on this property.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
They're, they're using the egress to Oak Forest, ingress is off of Sheridan Road. And like I said, previously, we had a, approved a grocery store, which was requiring additional parking that was actually going to be behind the building and using the unimproved alley area to access and all the rest, so.
Number, I just wanted to have an alternative plan for snow removal, I can't...
I'm sorry, say that again?
Have an alternative plan for snow removal? In terms of the size of the site?
For snow removal? Because it's such a tight site.
Well, there will be reserved spaces now that don't exist currently. So there's a five-foot landscape buffer that's going to be added to the north side of the site. The northwest corner is also going to have a large area there for reserve. And then the far east side of the site is going to have eight feet of landscape there placed as well. So there'll be a couple of different spots for which they can push.
Is this business, this planned business, do they absolutely have to have a liquor license? Is that part of...
I think that ties in, that, that ties in with their desire for the video gaming. They can't have the video gaming without the liquor. But yeah, that's, in our conversation that we had with the developer, with the business owner, that was his desire, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion on the floor. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Sittick.
No.
Trustee Wells. Mayor Hooker.
Mayor votes for it. Aye. Okay. Motion carries. And was there anything else from staff?
Nothing additional, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. We have no old business on the agenda, is there any new business for the board?
Go vote.
Go vote. Vote early, vote late, vote on time.
I voted this morning, there was a line at 9 o'clock at Giant City Hall, out the door.
Wisconsin statewide apparently had some computer glitches where they were unable to print the labels. So they were having to handwrite information on the envelope for the voter, of the voter and the address and everything else, and the lines went forever, just screeching halt, so.
The folks at Giant City Hall struggled with that technology, the lady that was checking me in just...
Yeah.
They're not all tech savvy when they, they take that job on.
All right, now is the time for citizens wishing to address the board on any and all topics. Just ask that you come to the podium, state your name and your case.
David O'Rear. Mayor Hooker, members of the board. I would like to say this to start with, I think in the staff report B, I think a little, a little more information should have been involved in what's taking place on that so that a person could do some input. There's no, that we're, you know, we're adding one, taking one away and it's, was not mentioned until what it was for or who it was for. So there should have been an opportunity, I feel, to speak out against that. But that's not what I'm here, a lot of part of that building is part of what I'm here about tonight. I'm glad to hear that something is finally going in there because our neighborhood has looked at that building and Mayor Hooker, I have to disagree with you, there's a lot of maintenance that hasn't been done on the outside of that building. For almost a year, we went with no windows in that building. Then we went with all plywood windows, looked great. Made me want to be proud of what I put all the money in my, in my home for. All we got it done, the doors, we got plywood, one window. So we may, we may get all glass in there. We've come a long way in, in what, 36 years that I've lived here? I wish this is... The only part that concerns me is the gaming because we have a location just south of there, a small tavern and pizza place with, with gaming. And the off-street parking and the parking, it's just totally out of control. So I expect to see the same thing on Oak Forest, unless we get some signs and maintenance. The only problem we run into there with, with signs or maintenance as far as our ordinance go, our ordinance is only enforced nine to five. We have nothing to do in the evenings. You can do whatever you want to do in this village after 5 o'clock because we don't, we don't have a full-time staff to do it. So that is... And that's nobody's fault, I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers or saying we didn't do what we should do or what we should do. I'm just stating the way I feel about it. If we're going to go into this with a, with a nice restaurant and especially with the adding of the gaming and the parking problems that's going to bring about, it's, it's time for us to, the village to extend that alley all the way through. I know the nursery daycare center that, that might open is not going to be for that. But we have to take some of this traffic... but we have to take some of this traffic off of Oak Forest at the entrance. We're going to have deliveries. I know we've always made, done agreements and things that we've discussed on this area. Well, we're not going to have deliveries, well, if you're going to have liquor and beer, you're going to have deliveries. Now, are we going to have Oak Forest, which is a narrow street? We've just added the curbing. Are we going to have liquor trucks lined up there when you go to turn in? Where are they going to go? We need that alley. If you're, if you're going to go this way, and I'm glad to see it, I'm not criticizing that. Only thing I'm considering, I was criticizing is the way this was written up, as far as something that's going to be... There should have been some place open to public on this, but it, there's no clearance there. But anyway, if we go through, we've got an opportunity now to take a good situation and make it a real better and a nicer-looking situation as to what we've got there and what I've looked at for 36 years. The weeds behind the daycare center and the village, uh, the right-of-way is not nine inches, but probably closer to 29, 39 inches that we've been looking at, it's never mowed. So if they're that concerned about having that area, you'd think they would take care of it. Now, you talk about adding the frontage, the trees and landscaping and that. The landscaping on the road will only last one winter. You get the salt and everything, it's gone, and we start over, never, never replaced, never taken care of like it should be. The, I'm not against what, what was approved for that. Don't get me wrong, I'm glad to see it, I hope it goes. I am concerned with some of the problems that are going to be there, and as I compare that to the size of the operation down the street, doing the same thing, I see nights that you won't be able to turn in Oak Forest because of the traffic.
Okay.
We went through this until they marked out the codes enforced in that neighborhood. There would be Friday nights that cars would be parked on both sides of the street. It's lucky to get through. I don't know if a fire truck could have got through or not, but that's been, that's been resolved, but the hard work of this gentleman right here.
David, if I could interrupt you, and it's my, it's my fault, I did not announce the five-minute time limit that the board has adopted. Are you getting close to wrapping up, or...
Yeah, I'm, I'm close.
Thank you. I, it's my, my mistake for not raising it, so...
How much time left I left?
It's passed.
Is it? Well, that's, that's good. Because it, it's both, both locations from there, John, and it's, it's time that we start doing things the right way when we're going to do things. And if we don't put that right-of-way through there and, and open that up, it's something that we're going to have to address sooner or later. Thank you, and I apologize for going over.
No, that's, thank you, Dave, appreciate your comments. All right, anyone else wish to address the board tonight? Okay, not hearing anyone? All right, we have no cause tonight for an executive session.
I guess that leaves adjournment, I'd like to offer a motion to adjourn.
We do have a motion to adjourn by trustee Jensen.
Second.
We have a second by trustee Sittick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're up, we're...
I guess we're staying.
We're adjourned.